So our third and final presentation this evening is one from council. And I've got a great deal of pleasure in introducing Greg McDonald, Samantha Connor and also Amanda Choi. And Amanda's from our Better Business Partnership who will talk about supporting economic growth. And Better Business Partnership is a joint council service funded by Kuringai, North Sydney and Willoughby councils. And the program aims to assist businesses to achieve success through sustainability. A very much a hot topic. And Greg will commence the presentation by discussing streetscapes and what Willoughby council is doing in that regard. So maybe just welcome Greg McDonald up here now.
Good evening. My name's Greg McDonald, I'm the Director of Planning and Infrastructure at Willoughby Council. As the mayor said, I'm going to give you a quick overview on our streetscape program. Council a number of years ago, probably two or three years ago, was doing streetscapes in a bit of a sporadic arrangement. And we've tried to collate that and bring it into a more collated and programmed arrangement over the last 12 months or two years. We've been working with communities to try and upgrade our, I guess, streetscapes throughout the, more the local centres rather than the CBD strategy. Because we want to see vibrancy in those small shopping strips. So we've been concentrating on what we can do in those small areas to, I guess, enliven the area and make it a more place-based area for people to meet, to do their shopping and to come together. Health and vitality of those areas is primarily one of the things we've been, I guess, concerned with. We've got some examples and I wanted to sort of maybe just take you through some of these very quickly, just to give you a bit of a feel and a flavour for some of the work that we've done over the last few years. The first one, Sails Bay Road, I think I've got the... What's wrong with me? Am I going backwards? Good. There we go. Sorry about that. Sails Bay Road and Payla Street. The two photos there are the before and after photos of that location. In all of our areas, we try to keep the budget the same on a square metre basis. So we've been aiming around about the $500 to $550 per square metre for a budget. But that doesn't mean that the work is the same in every location. We specifically engage the local community and the residents in that local community to come up with the type of streetscape and presence that they're looking for. So in this instance, in Sails Bay Road and Payla Street intersection, the residents wanted the asphalt to tighten, foot paving with the branded area. But they particularly wanted the sandstone curbing retained. Now, sandstone curving is a little bit more expensive, so they traded that off against some of the street furniture. But we're able to do the sandstone curving and in fact in Payla were able to also provide quite a nice community garden that the residents specifically asked for and agreed to maintain. And we're quite happy to accommodate them. So if you go into this streetscape now, just around the corner in Payla, there's a very large community garden with vegetables, herbs growing in it that the community now maintains and operates. In this instance, Willoughby Road, it was very much a case of trying to tie the existing streetscape, which was very fractured all the way down the length of Willoughby Road and into French's Road, into a single continuous presence so that we had continuity from one end of the road right through to the other end. So again, a similar asphalt treatment, but there was quite a lot of street trees installed in this instance as well. And the infill of the areas where you can see there, it's all concrete and tellstr pits and everything. We've had to tidy that up and bring that all together into one uniform-looking streetscape. Something totally different was Boundary Street in Penshurst. So again, this one, I guess the residents said they weren't so much fussed on the asphalt, they wanted a pavement. Now, the pavement was a little bit more expensive, but we're able to again trade off some of the street furniture that they wanted with a higher finish of pavement. And that was again to, I guess, address the type of need or the type of desire of the residents. The final, I think it's the final one, there's only a few actually. High Street Wilkes, you can see there, again, they've chosen to go for the higher spec pavement. Slightly different colour and this one with a pattern. And so you can see, I guess, the thing coming through is that no two streetscapes are the same, but we use the same budget criteria for each centre. By allowing the community to have input into the design, we go through a process generally where there's at least two iterations of design that goes back to the residents and the shopkeepers. Councilors are involved generally towards the latter two thirds of the process. Once we've got all the information from the residents and the shopkeepers, fed through the process to get a final design. And you can see that it comes up with quite a, I guess, a favourable outcome. Similar with Castle Cove, they've gone for a pavement lighter colour, they didn't like the grey, they wanted a more sandstone colour. We don't really have a strong opinion as engineers, we'll go with whatever the community wants and provide it works in that location. But you can see in this instance, a lot more control was, or a lot more intention, I guess, was put into some of the landscaping in this instance and more trees. Again, Deneween Avenue was just a nice tidout with asphalt and brick pavement surroundings. I mentioned Payla and the vegetable garden, that's the show that they're there. Over to Amanda.
Thanks Greg.
Thanks.
So Greg, do you just want to talk about these future projects, the ones that are coming up?
The ones coming up, sorry. So for this financial year, we're working on a number of projects. Wilks Avenue Tarman is being designed as we speak. It's a similar thing where we've been talking to the residents and the shopkeepers in Wilks Avenue about the type of pavement treatment. And in that particular instance, we've had, I guess, a strong indication from the Wilks Avenue people that it's not so much about the pavement that they're interested in, but it's about the night time economy. So to engage, I guess, more of the night time economy in Wilks Avenue, we're looking at more of a lighting feature and how we would get lighting into that area. So to activate that in those darker times. Hampton Road is being designed as well at the moment. That won't be delivered in construction wise until next year. We're getting all the design done this financial year with construction next year. Again, it's very early stages for that project. We're just in the stages of just starting to talk to the residents and shopkeepers about what they want. Strong, I guess, indicator from some of the shopkeepers that some of the public facilities need upgrading. Certainly some of the issues around pedestrian movements across Hampton Road and linking to the railway station are some of the key design features that we're now looking at how do we incorporate into that. Penshurst Street Willoughby, similar to the Willoughby Road design. It's the other end of that, I guess, the Willoughby Road, Penshurst Street section that comes down on the south end near Mowbray. Tying that all in at the moment, we finished Penshurst Street last year. It'd be nice to continue that theme all the way through Mowbray Road and up into, sorry, finished Willoughby Road last year, tied into Mowbray Road and Penshurst Street for the next coming year. And then a much smaller project down at Monona Road and Sails Bay Road at Northbridge. It's a fairly small project, but that's one where we will be again talking to residents in the next coming months about the type of design that they want and how that might, a unique, I guess, design for that small little precinct there. Thank you. Back to you now Amanda.
Any questions?
I can take questions if you do.
Thank you. My name is Amanda. Hopefully we'll go to the next slide. I'm the BVP Programme Coordinator. The program is a free council-funded program to help smaller and medium businesses really thrive through sustainability. So thanks to our three funding councils, Willoughby, Kuringai and North Sydney. The program has been around for 10 years. I've been involved for about three. And when I first, I'm a Willoughby local as well. When I first left the corporate world and was looking to establish a sustainability consultancy, I came across the Better Business Partnership program and I was astounded by how innovative and incredibly unique it was and really wanted to work here. So it's a bit of a dream come true that recently I was appointed this role. And we have BVP Program Coordinators in each of the three councils. So just to show of hands, thank you for coming out tonight. I know it's very hard as a business owner to give up your free time. Who is a business owner in one of those three council areas? Do you have a business in Willoughby or in Kuringai or in North Sydney? Yes, I've got a target market here. Yes? And I know at least one BVP member. Is anyone else a BVP member or have ever been? Yes? Okay, I know two. All right. Right, so you're all my target market. So let me explain how the program works. So we began 10 years ago with a grant from the Environmental Trust and the support of the three councils to help businesses to save money primarily through energy, water and waste costs, which were at that time escalating and no surprise, they are escalating again at the moment. So our initial cause, our original mission was really energy costs, waste costs and water costs. Over the past 10 years, sustainability has become much bigger. Has anyone heard of the three levels of sustainability? Environmental goes without saying. Obviously you need to be financially and economically sustainable to stay in business. So that's the second level. The third one, which has become so much more relevant, is about being connected with your local community, being socially aware, being able to demonstrate that you're not just in business for yourself. That you're not just about profit at all expense, at no expense. And you are really there to be a better business, better than, you know, the businesses down the road. Because you show that you're connected to your community, you care about your customers, you care about your staff. So what we do at the Better Business Partnership is we help local businesses and increasingly startups. There is no business small and too small for our help to become a better business. What we also do, a great benefit of being part of the BVP program, which is free, is that we are your one-stop-shop into all things government, including your council. Because we are employed by council, we are connected with the three councils that we are funded by. If you have an issue with your local council, we are your friends. We will come to you, our program managers or myself, we will work through issues and be your gateway. We're also a gateway into programs such as the Easy to Do Business program that you heard from Anthony tonight, as well as the Business Connect program. So for those businesses that aren't here tonight and don't have the time to search the internet and find out about these programs, for those people that we work with where it's relevant, whether it's being a startup or whether it's needing a digital consultancy or digital coaching, we can connect those people who are too time poor and may not really understand what they're missing in connecting with programs such as those that we talked about tonight. But there are a whole lot more that are provided by state and federal governments around energy, around waste from the EPA, from the Environmental Protection Authority in New South Wales, from the Department of Planning and Industry, which was Environmental, the Office of Environment and Heritage, which will provide rebates for commercial businesses to purchase energy efficient lighting or refrigeration, for example. So we are that one-stop-shop that will do all the homework for you and say, you know what, we've gone a way and found all of these things that you're eligible for. The other thing that we do is we have an assessment in relation to how sustainable your business is. And this is really the crux of the program. We have, our program managers will come out and talk to you about what you're doing in nine areas. So I have a certificate here. We run across nine areas. From the top, we have energy, waste and water, which are the three environmental ones. But we also deal with community and staff, that's our social aspects. And then we, we work with sustainable transport, which is, and it's very basic. Do you drive to work? Do you, you know, start walk, take a bike, drive, fly? But at the much broader level, it's about understanding the carbon emissions relating to your business. So whether you're a small business or whether you're a larger consultancy which requires airline travel or, you know, driving, we work on understanding how sustainable transport is relevant to your business and how encouraging more sustainable methods is actually going to benefit you, saving money, for example. Another area is sustainable purchasing or procurement. And in the area where as a local business, you know, your council or becoming a supplier to government is so important, it's actually a very, very lucrative area to break into. The Better Business Partnership is one gateway that will really help you and educate you in what is required. For example, the Modern Slave React, which is coming in and is going to apply to all government purchases. So even as a small business, you may think, oh, I don't need to worry about that. But if you're going to tender for businesses, that tender to provide your services to local government or state government organizations, you will need to be across this and show that you're compliant. Another area that is quite recent is, we call it buy-by-plastic, and it's about eradicating single-use and disposable plastic in particular in your business. And we've launched a campaign that encourages not only businesses, but also our local residents and shoppers to say, buy buy plastic and hello BYO. Bring your own cups, bring your own bags, use reusable straws if you need to. All of those areas, which are so topical now. And all of our funding councils either have or are in the process of bringing in single-use plastic policies. Which means that if you're conducting any business on council-owned property or you're supplying to the council, they will require you over time to demonstrate that you can do business without single-use plastic. So we have a whole program that is around educating and providing you with the understanding and suppliers, alternative suppliers to be able to do that if you're, you know, you've got plastic bags or disposable coffee cups and you think, well, there is no alternative. There are, but we understand you probably don't have time to do your Google searches and spend hours and hours looking. We have. The last section is called Business Health. And that really pertains to the fundamental tools that you need to have in place in order to be successful and sustainable in the long term. And it goes exactly to what Gary and Anthony were talking about around, you know, the boring things like compliance, but also being able to have a business growth strategy, having a mission and purpose so that you can attract the right staff, so that you can really know what your business is about rather than it owning you. You being able to really stand up and know what I'm in business for. We have connections with the Business Connect digital strategy. So we are putting on events both this year and next year, which will train you at a very highly subsidised cost in terms of what you need to know about having a digital presence. It's so important these days to be on Instagram or Facebook or LinkedIn and using those channels for marketing. Because those traditional ways of just putting an ad in a newspaper or a television or a radio just doesn't work anymore. You know, you can't use that splatter gun approach. So I wanted to play a really short video, which is a case study. Does anyone go to the Steam Engine Cafe down at the concourse, the Railway Concourse? Yeah, so these guys are one of our champion businesses. So I've got a little interview here with Rollman, who actually, I think he's just sold it, but Sam's still there. Do I control this or do you just?
My name's Rollman, it's really Chatswood Station. Standing outside the coffee shop, the same engine. I guess for me, the coffee experience is so much more than just like drinking a cup of coffee. And so every place I've worked, I felt that it was a little bit deficient in that atmosphere. It was very, either very focused on incredible coffee or it was a great social atmosphere with rubbish coffee. And so I sort of wanted to, you know, give both of those things on the head. I guess Sam and I knew that there wasn't really eyes in Chatswood yet. We knew the coffee drinkers were there, we knew that there's a lot of people around. But I think Chatswood sort of has this, yeah, perception of life, you're in a bit of an urban wasteland or you come here for the balls or you come here to work or you don't come here. But that's not to say that the people here don't have character and that people here don't drink coffee and, you know, commit banter and do music and stuff. So I had a good feeling that we'd be quite busy from day one. But we opened our doors and it was like 15 kilo days straight up and it was crazy. We were just smashed from day one. And so I guess that hasn't really diminished. I guess we've become a lot more efficient with what we do and the way we do it. So that the volume has borne up, that we waste less and that sort of thing. So I mean, we weigh in, weigh out every single shot. We're cleaning our, for example, if it was every kilogram of coffee we were throwing around. As we're servicing our group very regularly. We give out our used coffee grounds for free because that's just a really useful resource. Different gardeners, composting, worm farms, that sort of thing. We give pretty healthy cup discounts. We've got our own branded brewables, but also anyone, any old pug will do, bring along or discount you. And only this year we've specified on our menu that you are now paying for takeaway packaging. Like that is a specific component of the price of our coffee packaging. It's really the basic philosophy that every single disposable that we're not using makes a difference. I get all that. We recycle our soft plastics, we do general hard-ordered interrecyclables as well. Coffee cups from Toby's, we get our milk from Riverina Fresh, which is obviously in the Riverina region. We get inside-out fresh, our milk and milk for our line of milk to Australian companies. And then we get fresh produce from a deliverer who can get us vegan produce from the markets, which is great because we don't really care that it looks like it tastes the same as it's all there. So we've got a couple of other small suppliers who do our vegan treats and that sort of media all over. Sam and I have always been really conscious of how fortunate we are, not just to have our shop here, but for our, you know, our life here in city compared to what it was. So we've had a few sponsored children through World Vision that we consistently sign. We've supported Women's Refuge Mary's House at their annual fundraising walk with our coffee car. Oh yeah, Sam raised our, well, at Red End, I think from November in our first year, where the disabled shave his beard. I think we're definitely fortunate to have ridden a real wave of sustainability awareness in the last two or three years. I mean, it seems to be really on everyone's agenda, which is so fantastic. Things like the Sustainability Award that we won last year was great because through channels like social media and just in the shop, they see the award, they're like, what's that about? And the very way that that award came about was just from, you know, council and Better Business Partnership coming along and saying, hey guys, notice you're doing a bunch of stuff, you know, you feel like you're credentials to see you're up for an award. And it turns out we were. But that was really nice because that was stuff that we were just doing anyway. Thanks for watching, thanks to Better Business Partnerships for having us, for their issues. And if you're ever in Chatswood, please pay for a load of coffee, you've got a chat, but please go up to us with a smile on your face.
So I wanted to show you just in one of our champion businesses, his own words, what he got out of the Better Business Partnership. Another one, I don't have time to show you, but we have a YouTube channel called BVP TV with lots of case studies.
I've been on a mission.
And this is a recent childcare centre in Northbridge that we joined to the program. We work with childcare centres as well as cafes, restaurants, office-based businesses, commercial industries, you name it. Any business. And we have categories in the Better Business Awards. So the Steam Engine won the best cafe and restaurant award last year. So I just wanted to finish with a couple of other points about the BVP program that would make it, I suppose, relevant for you guys in the audience tonight. So we're very much about local promotion. We have social media channels that are linked with all of our council and other business networking partners that we will create these sorts of stories and blogs. And for our members, really help to promote them out into the local community. We're all about building relationships. And we've had about 1,000 businesses active across the program and that's been consistent for the whole 10 years. So it's pretty small, but what that means is that we're quite intimate and we can really, we get to know each other, you know, so we know your first, on a first-name basis. And when we have our networking events about three or four times a year, we, you know, we get together and it really becomes a very close-knit community of like-minded, forward-thinking businesses who can talk and share their experiences in each of these areas and give each other not only the learnings so that you can implement things that other businesses have tried and tested and done well, but it also creates a lot of business opportunities. So we've had a lot of B2B businesses in our better, lots of these, Better Business Partnership networking community that are actually, you know, creating business opportunities between themselves. I mentioned the awards, so we are at the moment, we have launched a new online assessment. So if you're wondering how I get into this BVP program, go onto our website. I have some flyers over there, it's easy. It's www.bvp.org.au And there is an online assessment that takes about 20 minutes. And then our BVP program managers will contact you and take you through that. And if you're eligible for any of those badges, then you will be awarded those badges to recognize that you're doing well in those areas. They'll also help you create an action plan, one to three items, just to get you to the next level. And once you have badges, then you're automatically in the Better Business Awards to win one of the nine or 10 categories. So we have categories in each business category. I think that is all I have for you. So am I doing questions now or at the end? Okay.
All right, I'll hand over to Sam.
I hate seeing photos of myself. I'll go straight to that one. Working for local government, I have real privilege in organising events across a really broad range. And I like to categorize them into two different sections, destinational major events and community events. But it doesn't matter what type of event it is, they are really responsible for creating fun, lots of entertainment and opportunities for people to participate in their community. But also they're important for creating destinations and supporting local business and providing like a cash boost or a cash injection into the community. They raise the profile of Chatswood and the CBD and they raise the profile of Willoughby as a really vibrant and diverse city. And this little picture here is of some siblings at our Emerge Festival this year at Street Fair, making a purchase from one of the food stalls that were there. Now, an event visitor typically spend between $30 and $50 at an event, just depending on, you know, what kind of event it is and on what price the merchandise or the food and beverage offering is there. While they're in Chatswood, they'll also fill up their car with petrol. They might pay for parking at a parking station, although we do have a lot of free parking here. They'll also, they might come for a competition or a conference at the concourse, so they'll pay for accommodation. They'll do a bit of retail therapy, they might get, if they're staying for the weekend, they might go and get a massage or a facial. So all of those things really contribute to boosting the economy, it's not just what they spend at the event. Economic impact of an event is twofold. So we talk about direct economic impact and that's normally what we use to measure the success of our events. And that's having a look at the visitors, the visitor spend as a direct consequence of the event on the day. as a direct consequence of the event on the day. Total economic impact, however, measures the economic contribution to it to the same area over a long period of time. And that costs a lot of money to have the research to do that. So we normally concentrate on the direct economic impact for Chatswood. Now, the reason that we do this is to make sure that our stakeholders know that our events are successful. And our stakeholders are our residents, our community groups, also our sponsors. So our sponsors really need to know that the money that they're contributing to the events is worthwhile and they're getting their return on, their return for investment. So Vivid Sydney at Chatswood is one of our destination events. We love to have Vivid at Chatswood. We're one of the only, we are the only council precinct that runs a precinct of Vivid Sydney. Destination New South Wales is the owner of the event. And we're very lucky to be able to have it at Chatswood. We have unprecedented exposure to Sydney and international markets with this event. So it's really important to us. But it does contribute to our community. So we have over 250 volunteer shifts that are filled through Vivid. We also have around 70,000 visitors each year and an average annual economic impact to Chatswood of $3.4 million. We know that 90% of the money that's spent at Vivid goes towards food and beverage. And now I can tell you about the artists. We have about, we also support 38 artists this year. 15 of those were female, 21 musicians plus Willoughby Symphony Orchestra. 12 countries were represented and we also reached about 20 million people on social media. So it really does have a significant impact on our community. Our Emerge Festival, now this is what we would class as a community event, but still has a significant impact on the local economy. And these two lovely ladies were participants in our parade. So the Street Fair is the key highlight of the Emerge Festival. It starts with a street parade with about 1,000 participants from a raft of community groups showcasing their costumes, their performances and their activities that they have to offer the community. This year at Street Fair, we had about 19,000 visitors. It was about 38% growth on the previous year. And the economic impact of about $530,000. About 50% of that is spent on food and beverage and the other 50% on retail. On the horizon, this year, in 2019, we expanded our Chinese New Year Festival. For 21 years, we've had a really good relationship with the Chinese Cultural Centre who have run a Chinese Celebration Day. This year, we worked really closely with them to expand the festivals to honour all of our Asian communities within Willoughby. So Year of the Rat was our kickoff. We had 30 events and activations over three weeks. We had Golden Market, which is one of the traditions of Chinese Year or Lunar New Year. And we had a Twilight Parade with about 500 participants. This year, we've attracted sponsorship from Qantas Magazine and Air China. We also have a partnership with the China Australia Institute for Culture and Arts. And they're integral in helping us to decipher Lunar New Year and tell our community what Lunar New Year is all about. For 2020, we'll be doing Year of the Rat. And I urge you to look out for the Rat Attack display, which will be an artwork throughout the, throughout the CBD of Rat Day Castle, beautiful Asian and Australian fauna on them. And we also are really focusing our messaging on our food destination. So Chatswood is, has a plethora of dining options and we know that that's really popular for young foodies in Sydney. So we have just signed on Adam Lau, who was a previous MasterChef winner as Chatswood's food ambassador. And he was kickoff stories on our Chatswood website with Lunar New Year working across Vivid as well as our Emerge Festival.
That's all I have for you today, isn't it? Thank you. 7:53 and I did promise you that we'd conclude by eight o'clock. So I will encourage our presenters to stay afterwards. Perhaps if you've got one-on-one questions, you can do that. But I think you've all got a bit of a flavour for what the council is hoping to achieve here. Is that we do want to be working hand in hand with small business. We want to be supporting you as best we can. We are absolutely committed to doing that. The word free seemed to be mentioned by all the presenters. We love free things and the free support that you can get, that level of bias, I think is something that will be very warmly welcomed by our small business people. So I will conclude it there. Thank you for coming up, coming out tonight, giving up your spare time. And please feel free to stay afterwards and have a one-on-one conversation. We're here to have a chat. Thank you very much.